In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made as required, indicating that this work session regular meeting would take place at the municipal building at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, September 10th, 2024.
We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing by the invocation delivered by Deputy Mayor Ed Potasnik.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather here today as members of the Township Council, we pray that we are ever mindful of the opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens in our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. May we establish peace throughout the world, the nations, and here in our own community. May tonight's debate be something that people watch closely and provide for a better America, a safer America, and let us continue to strive to make the world better in every way that each of us can. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois.
Here.
Councilman Karazi.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Potasnik.
Present.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Here.
Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
Here.
We are on to item number five on the agenda. Copy of the agendas are there near the clerk. First item is check presentation to the Center for Great Expectations. Assemblyman Joe Danielson? Danielson.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor.
One, two.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me tonight, and thank you for a wonderful 9/11 ceremony that you do every year to honor those that we lost. Today, I'm here to talk about the Center for Great Expectations. It's here in Franklin Township, and it's one of the great elements of Franklin Township. It was established in 1998 by Ms. Peg Wright, who's sitting to my left, and I hope I don't get this wrong, but the center is off DeMont Lane, and its focus is that it houses women with children that are experiencing emotional abuse, physical abuse, addictions, and they have to care for a child or more. And their goal is to not only teach them how to be healthy, happy, productive individuals, but they also teach them how to parent as well. So in addition to being a residential therapy, healthy, happy home environment, they are stopping the generational cycle of addiction, abuse, and neglect, and the absence of education, and role model, and they are truly turning lives around and making new futures for these women and these children. I found out about them only a couple of years ago through a mutual friend of ours who happens to be a lobbyist, and I took a tour of it. My next step was to get them money from the state. I think I got one and a half million dollars. Then the following year, I thought it was so important that I got the Speaker and the Mayor to come there and take a tour of it, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful facility, and I encourage everyone to take a tour of that. You'd be right alongside me in supporting this. And they have two halves, actually, you have many halves. One section of the facility is for mothers that are under 18, and then the other side is for mothers who are over 18, and then they have condominiums and apartments that they own or in or manage that are used for housing these young women as a phase out of the program. And the program is actually a lot shorter than you would like it, financial constraints. You should also know that she operates in a negative too often. So for example, the facility segment for mothers that are under 18, she loses money every year, and that's only made up by either state grants that I provide or donations. So this year, I'm proud to present, again, along with the help of the Mayor that helped me lobby for this money, another check for the Center for Great Expectations, and I'd like to, Izzy, can you turn that, we have the proverbial giant check. Peg, please don't try to fold that up and put it in your wallet. So this year's great state grant is $1 million for the Center for Great Expectations. And this still leaves one and a half million dollar deficit for just one of the segments of her operations. The other big operation that she conducts every year is the other, last thing I want to talk about, she has an annual gala that she's, you hold it in Franklin this year, right, at the Marigolds? That's the big fundraising event she has that's more public, and I have committed to a table of 10 seats at $300 a seat. So I want you all to raise your hand. Who does not want to buy one ticket? Thank you. I'll come around later. Vasanella, you were the first one not to raise your hand, so I'll be, tomorrow morning, I'll be at your house. And Mayor, may I invite up Peg Wright to say a few words?
Oh, boy. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Franklin Township. I live in Franklin Township in Hunterdon County, so this Franklin Township is so close to my heart. Your police officers were there today. They're often there. They're lovely, and they support us, and I'm grateful for that, and I'm grateful to this entire committee, and I am so grateful to Joe, because we could not function without this funding. And as you pointed out, we have a full continuum of care. We treat pregnant and parenting women. 58% of maternal mortality is due to substance use and mental health disorders. There are less than 2% of programs across the country that treat women with substance use and mental health disorders. And how Joe so eloquently pointed out, we're about breaking cycles. We work with Rutgers University very closely. We collect a lot of data. We're very, very serious about this, and I will tell you, stigma is alive and well. My own dear friend, who's my doctor, RWJ, I will not mention his name, I adore him, and I told him 10 years ago, "By the way, I'm in recovery for 36 years," and he said, "You?" Just like that. And I said, "Shame on you." You know, yes, me. And it can be anyone, and it is anyone, and we have to come together as a community, and this township does that in spades, and so does Joe, and I thank you for that. God bless you.
Thank you.
So it's difficult to follow Joe, because he's said it all, but I did tour with him, and I was incredibly impressed with your facility. It just went on and on and on. It was amazing in the programs you had, but what really stood out was that this wasn't just a place to house people. It was a loving organization to bring people back from the lows that they were at, and that love clearly carries through to the product that you produce, which is happy, functional people.
Thank you, Mayor. The gala is October 18th at the Marigold, and I'll call all of you to stalk you for the money. Thank you.
Next is my brother's keeper presentation by the Franklin Township Police Department.
Good evening, everyone. I do not have a million dollar check, I wish, but I am Quavella Mayweather, Public Safety Director for Franklin Township. I have with me Captain Sean Hebbin, Sergeant Rebecca Leah, Officers Lauren Gregory, and Malcolm Belvin. Tonight, we have an update on my brother's keepers program.
Want to start? Are you the team? Okay. We have a backup.
Good evening, Mayor, Township Council, and Franklin Township community. We're here today to discuss, that was going? Okay, never mind then. Did it work? Okay.
...of developing our own certified MBK community. Our journey to MBK certification was delayed as the Obama Foundation enhanced and improved the program. Franklin Township has now met all the requirements to move forward in the process, and today we are here to present a brief summary of my brother's keeper to the Township Council and the Franklin Township community. In order to achieve certification, we have formed a collaboration with many of the township entities to achieve our ultimate goal of preparing our boys and young men of color for life's challenges. These township stakeholders include Franklin Township Police Department as lead, the Board of Education, youth center, houses of worship, community organizations, parent representatives, student representatives, and Township Council representation. My brother's keeper is built upon eventually achieving these six milestones. In our certification application, the police department has chosen to focus on milestone number six, all youth remain safe from violent crime. In order to achieve this goal, the stakeholders will focus on collectively reviewing and if needed, making changes to select policies and procedures within their respective fields to achieve this change. And number two, creating events, workshops, and mentoring opportunities around establishing a violence-free environment. You may be asking, how will this benefit Franklin Township? The first benefit will be violence reduction in our community by our continued partnership with our stakeholders. The second is we become part of the MBK leadership network, which provides networking opportunities, exchanging of ideas, collaborative opportunities nationally, and community partnerships on a national level. Here, you can see a current list of certified communities just on the east coast. Franklin Township will be the second certified city in New Jersey. Third benefit is we become eligible to compete for grants, internships, apprenticeships, and mentorship opportunities. Finally, we also benefit from opportunities to gain funding for MBK from major corporate entities such as these. If anyone wishes to give input or comments on our certification or has questions, please contact us at crbprograms@franklinandj.gov. Thank you.
So that concludes our update and presentation on MBK. We'll be back later once we receive our full certification.
Thank you.
That's great. Awesome.
Great job.
Good job.
Okay. The next item on commendations and proclamations is Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, and Deputy Mayor Potasnik will be presenting.
We have art on the monitors. It's a beautiful moment, so I'd like to invite the folks to stand behind me from the Hispanic Latino community. The next proclamation is on Hispanic, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, and we have folks joining us from the business community, from the health and wellness beauty community, folks that are part of cleaning services, we have media, we have individuals, and I'll let them do an introduction after I read the proclamation from the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Council of Mexico, so we really appreciate all of you being here. Thank you. I know you were here a little bit. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. So Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated from September 15th, just around the corner, to October 15th, recognizing the rich cultural heritage and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans, and whereas the Hispanic and Latino community has played a vital role in shaping the history, culture, and identity of our nation, and I might add, our township. Whereas this month provides an opportunity to honor and recognize the achievements, traditions, and diversity of Hispanic and Latino Americans, now therefore, we, as Deputy Mayor and Phil Kramer, Mayor of the Township of Franklin, and the council members here in the Somerset, New Jersey, in the state of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in the Township of Franklin. Let us celebrate and recognize the significant contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans to our community and the nation, and we're really pleased to have some of those folks with us, and I invited one to speak. We're trying to keep tonight's program so folks can get it home from must-see TV to join us, and also if we can do quick introductions of each of the folks joining us. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council, City Council, the city of Franklin. First, I'd like to introduce one of the most representative entrepreneurs in the state, Ms. Vaughn, Vaughn Lyon. Over here, we have Dr. Maria Santiago, for she's doing a lot of work in the community. We have the consulate from Mexico, and she's, Ms. Irma Larios, and Ms. Maya, my wife, and Ms. Teresa Vivas from New Brunswick, Lasos America. The Latino community is representing 2.2 million people in the state of New Jersey. It's 22%. The Spanish language is the second most spoken language in the world, right after Chinese, Mandarin, and English being the third language. So bringing in, this ties in with what we're doing statewide, which is encouraging people to speak Spanish, also elevate the Hispanic culture. In this township, the Board of Education, they have 37% of the student body is Latino, is Latino families. In the city, in this township, is 17%, so we appreciate what Deputy Mayor is doing by signing this proclamation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. We're now on to public discussion. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public. To speak about anything related to government, we're going to limit tonight to three minutes of time. They only speak once. No yielding of time. Please state your name and address when you come up. Anyone wishing to speak?
I see not a stir in the audience. I move that we close public comment.
Seconded.
We have a motion to close. Do we have a second? Do we have a second on?
Yes, seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing public session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Public session is closed, so we have no answers for the public to comment on, and may God grant that the council comments are only as long as the public comments. Good luck. Councilman Karazi.
Okay. I guess this is a test. I'm gonna make it quickly. Good evening, everyone, and good evening, Franklin. So I hope everybody had a great summer, and during the summer, we had a few grand opening of new businesses, and that's wonderful. We, and I participated in a couple of them. We wish them the best of luck and success. Our goal in Franklin Township is to be the preferred place for businesses, and we are happy to see that more and more businesses coming to our township. A couple of announcements that could help our community members, the flu season is around the corner, and during the Advisory Board of Health, we learned that the Somerset County Health Department is planning to offer free flu shots, and they may be coming to places like Food Bank, Senior Citizen Center, and maybe Youth Center, and even House of Worship. Also, please remember the ANCA program for 2021 is up, and you can apply if you were a homeowner in 2021 and your gross income was less than $250,000 or $250,000 or lower, you may get up to $1,500, and if you are senior, 65 and over, you may get additional $250, and if you're a renter, you get $450 plus $250 if you are over 65. There is an excellent training for youth mental health first aid, which is going to be held on September 30th from 9:00 to 3:00 PM in the community senior centers, so I encourage anybody who is interested to learn about the mental health, especially our youth, believe it or not, 64% of the youth with major depression do not receive any mental health treatment, and also, 1 in 5 teens and young adults live with mental health condition. So in this training, people will learn how to identify, understand, and respond to signs of mental illness and substance abuse disorder. Human Relations Meeting is going to be on September 25th, 7 o'clock, across the hall, and we have Reverend Sonia Redd, who's going to be the guest speaker in that meeting, and they are trying to find ways that we can collaborate and better unite the community. Lastly, I would like to recognize a couple of things that happened in our township. Some individuals and organizations did a great job. Assembly Joe Danielson, as the ICNA, they had a back-to-school backpack program, which they distributed hundreds of backpacks, many of them filled with school supply, and we had another organization by the name of IDMA, who for the first time started a new program where they bought, I believe, over 300 new clothes for the students at Pine Grove Manor School. And finally, let me know that if we have, I want to let you, everybody know that we have opening in both Advisory Board of Health and Human Relations Commission, so if anybody's interested to join those, please come and sign up. You can get the information from our website, Township website. I'm the liaison for both of them, and please call me if you have any questions, and we look forward to having you and join to those two boards and commissioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Oni Jaka. Mike.
Hello? Hello? Well, we all are aware that we've had a series of accidents on Canal Road. We all are aware that we've had a series of accidents on Canal Road. I've actually discussed it with the Deputy Mayor. Mayor, I'm moving a motion as a process to cordon accident in Canal Road. The sense of doing this is to make that road a safety place for the city. One, to paint the road, to paint a road stop sign ahead, that will help. Two, to mark to all roads junction to Canal Road between the stop signs, so I am moving a motion for this.
So we have a motion to paint stop sign ahead on Canal Road. Mentioned you, Councilman, I mean Deputy Mayor. Do you want to second that?
I'm happy to second that, absolutely.
Okay.
Share my appreciation to the Councilman for that. I would like to make a quick amendment, if possible.
Go ahead.
Which would be, on Canal Road, in addition to folks running the stop signs, which we've seen, and just making folks more aware, there are some skinny bridges. They're really one-lane bridges, and folks, they're marked, but folks don't always notice, and they kind of go quickly through, and it causes a lot of consternation and potential accidents, and maybe painting on the road in front of those, this is a one-lane bridge, so as they approach, they can be reminded, similar to the stop sign ahead, that that is, I think there's two instances of that. The Township Manager could add in more where there's the skinny bridges in addition for more awareness.
Sure.
I have about a half an hour booked for my report, so perhaps I can add on to that report.
So there was a motion and amendment, and the motioner accepted the amendment, so we have a motion as read between the two of them, and a second. Any other discussion on the motion?
So I have just a comment. I think about a couple of years ago, on Paddle Street, on, we had a similar situation where they ran the stop sign, went right into the Canal Road, Canal, now the Grouse Road is what we are talking about this time, and...
I believe that's what Councilman Oni Jaka is talking about.
No, no, no. So I think at that time, at that time, we talked about maybe putting some of the blinking stop signs.
So, so, and I had this conversation with the Deputy Mayor this morning. You need to apply proper engineering... You need to apply proper engineering to any of those applications. And most of what you're, so the, the stop ahead pavement markings, and we've discussed other pavement markings as well, that, that I've already begun the process of, of dealing with the engineering aspects of it through our Township Engineer and also through the Police Department Traffic Safety Bureau. Accident history is, is a trigger for certain things. And there is not a significant accident history at those locations. And both of the accidents that you're talking about, and without going into any great detail, had many other contributing factors that were, were the cause of those crashes, not the inability to see a stop sign. There's only currently one stop intersection in town that has a flashing beacon. That's New Brunswick Road and Willow Avenue. And that was as a result of a full engineering study to determine that there was a necessity for the flashing beacon. So the federal manual doesn't just allow them to go up anywhere you choose to put them. There has to be a, a reason for it. So we've, we've discussed different things as far as traffic safety, pavement markings and what have you. I mean, I have to be honest with you. My, my initial reaction to this was one of, like, maybe a giddy schoolgirl. I mean, I have been lobbying in one way or another for certain things that we're talking about here for many, many, many years. There is some cost involved in it. The, the stop signs, if we were going to look at those intersections that warrant them, it would probably be a capital project for 2025. The pavement markings are a little bit less expensive and don't require a significant amount of, of work on the back end to justify them. I've probably already identified them in my head on more than one occasion where I think that they would be warranted and where they would be helpful, not just stop ahead, not just one lane bridge ahead, but curve ahead as well. We have a number of locations. So all of that is going to be part of a bigger project, I think, that we're going to move forward with. Having council support for things like this is a huge thing for the Engineering Department, Public Works Department, and Police Department, and your manager, who has, like I said, wanted to see things like this for a long time.
Good. Yeah, Jaxlin and Graus, I think.
Yeah, there's, there are, there are locations that we will work on.
Any other discussion? All right, we can, I think we can do this by acclamation. It's just direction to the manager, who seems on board already. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you, Councilman Onichaka, and Deputy Mayor Potasnik.
What we'll do is we'll report this back through both Public Safety and Public Works, which are the two relevant committees.
Anything else, Councilman?
Well, that's it, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Council, for approving this.
Okay. Councilman Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. There were several events and meetings that I attended. But I think the most significant one was the August twenty-ninth, the Master Plan Review Meeting. We were given a report by the firm that was contracted to do. Essentially, the two intersections were added at the suggestion of residents that submitted their recommendations. So they, they included those two intersections for their study, and the numbers were presented. And more, more importantly, I think they have gone ahead and looked at the entire BI zone and the suitability of warehouses specifically. Whether is there any room for new warehouses in town? As you know, we have an ordinance banning warehouses. So I think what they're thinking is where there is no impact to residences in, in terms of traffic, I believe they are going to be recommending certain pockets of BI zone that would allow warehouses. But with, not, not spec warehouses, even if they are spec warehouses, they're going to recommend that they identify the use, the future use. And if it is not going to be used as it was built, that would be subject to another variance application. So that's a quick update I wanted to present. And other than that, there was a Soho Age Authority meeting on September third. And of course, we just came off from our nine eleven ceremony. Every year, it's a beautiful, beautiful commemoration of people who lost life from out town. Our hearts go out to them. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Francois.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's just one thing I want to highlight. On August seventeenth, it was Community Day here in Franklin Township. The First Baptist Church of Lincoln Gardens, they gave out over a thousand book bags to students. And they served over fourteen hundred meals. And Assemblyman Joe Danielson was there also giving out book bags. On that same day, the Week of the People gave out over three hundred fifty book bags. Both events ran out of book bags. There were that many children and their families that came to these events. At the Week of the People, we gave out free hot dogs, free hamburgers, free snow cones, free cotton candy. What else? Free, free, free. The, the kids could go in the game truck. The kids could, we had free pony rides. We had free bouncy rides. We had free face painting. It was a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful day. I want to thank the Somerset Community Action Program for partnering with us. The Franklin Food Bank was there giving out information. The NAACP was there doing voter registration. We had Robert Wood Johnson out there giving out information on health, health inequities and things that people could do to better their health. And then I also want to thank the Franklin Township Recreation Department because they helped a lot with the Week of the People event. And also the Hamilton Street Advisory Board, they provided some funding as well. And then the Franklin Township Police Department was there in droves. And what I thought was so, so beautiful was how things have changed in Franklin Township, how the police were there interacting with the kids. It was, it was a beautiful sight. And our Councilman Rom was there, and so was Councilman Vasanella. So they had an opportunity to see what a beautiful, beautiful day we had. It rained, but people stayed. They stayed in the rain. And, you know, we, we had the event from two to five, and everybody really had a good time. And also, I thought what was beautiful was there was a huge Latino population that came out as well. And a lot of people didn't speak English. But again, it was a great, great community day, and I look forward to next year having another type of Week of the People event over in Neiman Williams Park for, for our children and their families. It also represented the great, great need that's out there, that the people have that, you know, some of us may not be aware of, but that we served the need that day. And it was a community day here in Franklin Township. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Vasanella.
Yes. Now you got me thinking about that day, which really was so organic in nature. And I can relate to everything you said about it. The line for the cotton candy was so long all the time, I couldn't, I never got any because I'd end up talking so. Every aspect of it was so appreciated, from the water slide to the pony rides. Anyway, and just, I have to mention, because I remember before I even got on council, I think it was oh four, oh five, Percy Sanders, after the event, although we advertised it was fifty-seven years or something, it had gone away for twenty, twenty or twenty-five years. And he, almost single-handedly, along with a committee, I volunteered as a resident, and brought it back. And I remember that, that, and it's just gotten better and better every year. Anyway. Thank you for reminding me how great that was. Hope everyone had a good summer. Couple more weeks left. I think my Brother's Keeper, the program, has great potential. I look forward to hearing more about it. And glad we recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, which starts a week or so. It's a great time to learn more about Hispanic culture, experience Spanish culture, Hispanic culture, here or anywhere. Congratulations to the great Expectations. I'm proud that it's in the word, the word I serve and the word I represent. It's a very successful nonprofit, and its mission is so important. And regardless of people's political views, I think we realize government cannot do everything. And what they do, learn more about them, look them up online, I'm not going to go into it, but what they do is really serve a fantastic service that really is life-changing. I'll leave it at that. So anyway, welcome back from what hopefully was a great summer for everyone.
Thank you, Councilwoman Houdin.
Thank you. Good evening. Just wanted to highlight again, thank you to Councilman Harrison for mentioning about the Master Plan Study Review that happened on eight twenty-ninth. I will look for the minutes to that meeting to be posted on our designated website so I can circulate that back out and review the two intersections that were added. If residents still have questions, feedback, concerns, feel free to, as you are, sending them out to me. I will circulate those back to Mark, and then he can also review that with our third-party vendor. We had Moving the Park, and it was at Nasa Park, and we showed Shrek. And, you know, I just got to give it to our Parks and Rec staff, Public Works, Township Manager for putting this together so quickly. It was such a success, seeing the little kids with their families enjoying a night out. And it wasn't too hot. It was just perfect, whether having ice cream and hot dogs. And water bottles were provided by our Assemblyman Joe Danielson. So thank you to him and his staff for coming out and being part of that amazing night. And lastly, Back to School at the Youth Center. Councilman Francis, I did not see there, but it was an amazing, one again, an amazing event at the Youth Center. I enjoyed myself with the kids. And, you know, time to time I go there and I just continue to be amazed of what we did there. And just have, seeing the kids have an amazing time playing, playing in the game center, creating crafts. Just, it's a really nice center that's been built. And lastly, again, it's because it's Back to School, I, I have already seen cars flying by when the buses are being stopped. So I just request that let's just be mindful of the buses. If you see the flashing lights, please stop. We have little kids that are crossing, even little or big kids are crossing. So just definitely want to put that out there, just be mindful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wright.
Sister to Sister nineteenth annual virtual in-person breast cancer awareness run-walk on Saturday, October fifteenth, 2024. This organization provides sanctuary, support, education, advocacy, and breast cancer-related programs for minorities and underserved breast cancer survivors. Again, October the fifth, 2024, from nine A M. to five P M. Those that are interested can contact Ms. Dorothy Reed at seven three two two four six eight three zero zero. Again, seven three two two four six eight three zero zero. Or N J E N, excuse me, S N E N J two thousand at gmail dot com. Again, S N E N J two thousand at gmail dot com. Our food bank here in Franklin Township raised sixty-five thousand dollars during their Feed Franklin Fest with over two hundred attendees that live to the motto, neighbors helping neighbors. Derek Smith is director. You can go to their website at Franklin Food Bank. Franklin, email Franklinfoodbank@gmail dot com. Again, Franklinfoodbank@gmail dot com. Mr. Mayor, that ends.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Deputy Mayor Potasnik.
I have no comments. Thank you.
You're my favorite deputy mayor. For my comments briefly, Nabil, the gentleman we call NBC from the Library Board, has resigned. So my custom is to move up my representative to an open space. So Alicia Ali is now a full trustee. And I will be replacing, as my representative, Zachary Lichtman from East Millstone. And I apologize for not being here last council meeting. I've missed one council meeting since I have been mayor, and that was the day that I was sadly just had to decide whether to put my dog to sleep or not. The reason I missed it last week was because Fire District Three is under some distress, and there's potential for the East Franklin Firehouse to be shut down. I went there to tell them that it is unacceptable for that to happen. They're the highest performing firehouse at least in Somerset County. And they are having another meeting now, and I will find out later what the update is on that. But we will, I will do everything in my power to keep that from happening. That's all of my comments. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick things. One, just a reminder that at the end of the month, on Saturday, September, September twenty-eighth, from new to five, Colonial Park will be Franklin Day 2024. For those of you who are familiar with it, then you know what it will be. We're back in Colonial Park again now that it's available for us. And it is a community-wide celebration, entertainment, car show vendors, food vendors, nonprofit vendors, and, and just an all-around fun day, entertainment, both at the cultural arts stage as well as the main stage. Nob Hill, Colonial Park, off of Elizabeth Avenue and Mettlers Road. The other thing is that I just, I want to, I want, just want to add a little bit to Councilman Harrison's comments, as well as Councilwoman Houdin's. The BI study that Councilman Harrison was referencing is nowhere near complete. It is not at a point yet where there's any recommendations coming from the committee. The traffic study is complete, and the actual planning study, which will rely on a lot, on information from the traffic study, is just beginning now. So there are no recommendations from that report yet because the planning report has yet to be done because the investigation has just begun. And I think the last meeting that you were at was a steering committee meeting. So all of the minutes, Councilwomen, are up to date. Everything is up to date on the website. I spoke with Mark Healy today, and there is nothing further to add to the website at this time because it is up to date. The report is there from the traffic report. Final draft is posted, and that reflects the two intersection additions that Councilman Harrison had referenced. So that's, that's the update on the BI study. And Councilman Wright, we received today the proposals for the traffic study on Hamilton Street. They were due today, and staff will review them. And I will be able to report back at the next council meeting who that contract will be getting awarded to. I would imagine it'll probably be on the agenda at the next council meeting for award. Also received today were the proposals from affordable housing experts related to our looking to bring on board a, an expert related to the state's most current affordable housing laws that were adopted and will go into effect at the beginning of 2025. And we want to stay ahead of the curve as far as that's concerned. So we received them today, and we'll have a discussion in the Administration Committee about that.
Mr. Voynlack, Mr. Voynlack, I thank you for the traffic study that you're going to do today. And also the affordable housing, I'm a member of the Redevelopment Agency, and we definitely want to hear something about that as we move forward. So I want to thank you for both of those on behalf of all the constituents of Franklin Township.
Very good. And that's what I have, Mr. Mayor. And that's what I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Our meeting begins.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one thing?
Yes.
On the record, I want to say, the reason why I was not at the youth center back-to-school event was because I have my granddaughter, she's nine months old, and she is a piece of work. I could not take her over there.
We missed you both.
I missed it, too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Glad we cleared that up. Item number 10, council's discussion items, we have none. Item 11, approval of the minutes. I present the following minutes to the Township Council for their approval. Township Council Work Session, Regular Meeting, and Executive Session, minutes of July 9th, 2024, and the Work Session, Regular Meeting of August 13th, 2024. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Mayor, I, too quick, too quick. I have a correction on the July minutes, please.
That's what we go for next.
All right.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, both my reference and Councilman Karazi's reference on Kuali was transcribed as Diwali. So, I just want to correct that. They're not the same. However, our township, we are going to do Diwali on October 12th, so that's coming up next month, so I thought I'll just throw that in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other corrections? Hearing no other corrections, Madam Clerk.
Councilman embarrassant?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hudeen?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Item number 12, warrants of the, approval of the warrants, that's how we pay our bills. Warrants in the amount of $50,951,047.31 on September 10th are presented to the Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion on the warrants?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman embarrassant?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hudeen?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Item number 13, public hearing and adoption of an ordinance on second reading. First reading is when we announce to the world that we're considering an ordinance. Second reading is when we consider passing it, and the public has the opportunity to speak. Ordnance 444924, amend the municipal code of the Township of Franklin, Somerset County, New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 226, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 22613, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets. At Oak Brook Place, is presented for the township, is presented for a public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. This is the end of Oak Brook, in front of the sewage station. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
Some moved.
Do you have a second?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we are open to the public on this item only, same rules.
Mayor, seeing no one coming forward, a motion to close the public portion here.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we are closed. Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman embarrassant?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hudeen?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Ordnance 4450-24, this is, I'm sorry, this is our first readings now. Ordnance 4450-24, an ordinance amending the code of Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 226, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 226-31C, regulations for the movement and, I'm sorry, regulations for the movement and the public, and the parking of traffic on all other private properties. What we're doing is adding Somerset Gate. Somerset Gate is a community on Route 27, across from the New Brunswick Cemetery. It's privately-owned streets, but they're asking us to monitor those streets. And to do so, it's government, we have to do paperwork. So, do we have a motion to introduce?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman embarrassant?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hudeen?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
On to the consent agenda items, A through W, with the exception of P and Q, I'll explain in a moment. As listed on the consent agenda portion of this meeting, are presented to Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on what I just said?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. The reason why we're pulling P and Q is because Councilman Vasanella has to recuse himself due to potential conflict of interest on those two items. Any other discussion? Councilman, I mean Deputy Mayor, did you notice we're getting two electric vehicles?
I did, I was going to talk to the township manager, I'm assuming that's for the police.
It is for the police department, and they're being purchased with the opioid settlement funds to use towards our lead program and other drug reduction programs in the town.
I predict they will be very popular.
I predict, given the type that they got, and those that are available are the reason why they got them, is probably going to make them very popular.
Yes. Beginning of new things to come, cleaner air.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk.
Councilman embarrassant?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hudeen?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Now, items P and Q are presented to the Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, any discussions on P and Q? Madam Clerk.
Councilman embarrassant?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hudeen?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Upstated.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Thank you. No, there are no resolutions to be voted on separately. Old business, boards, committees, commission vacancies, any nominations? Very quickly, we have openings on Clean Communities, Advisory Board of Health, Advisory Rec Council, Hamilton Street Advisory Board, and Human Relations. There is no executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are adjourned. Be well, Franklin.
Have a good night.